Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry to keep you waiting. All right, so we're going to get started. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. We're here with leadership of council. I believe one other member is going to be here shortly. Couple of things. First and foremost, we suffered another stain on the city of Philadelphia by the senseless gun violence on the streets, literally. It just churns your stomach, you know, every time you see something happen at a very, very good event. Too frequently during the course of a week, you hear the music, you hear the sound coming from the various news accounts that you say, "Oh, oh, here we go. Something happened." And this is so unfortunate, but you know what? We got elected. We got elected for a purpose. We chose these jobs, right? Some of us begged for these jobs, and it's our responsibility constitutionally and morally to do our jobs. The Parkway incident was one of way too many. It just happened to be in another high-profile event. The simple reality is, is that today, we want to show the citizens of the city of Philadelphia, and I will acknowledge the level of controversy swirling around the second floor, the mayor with respect to his statements. We're not here for that. We're here to tell you what city council is going to do. The city council is committed. City council will continue to do its job in an extremely passionate way, as we have on all facets. We are integral part of this government, and we will provide the necessary funding, be it support for organizations that are fighting gun violence, or be it support for law enforcement, to give them the appropriate tools to deal with these issues. We cannot give up, okay? We cannot let them win, all right? People deserve, people in the city of Philadelphia deserve the right to have the quality of life that they should. They should be able to go to an event. They should be able to go to simple things such as going to the store in their communities. And it's our responsibility to make sure that happens. We're not going to lean on federal government or the state government, because we'll be waiting far too long, because I don't have a whole lot of faith in terms of what they're likely to do. Actually, and I might get in a little trouble, I'm not, frankly speaking, very excited about the most recent law that was passed and signed into law by the federal government, because I don't think, even if passed and enacted, that's going to solve the problem that we have in the city of Philadelphia. So today, we want to first and foremost, talk about our commitment. Second, we want to talk about the need to do some additional things. Can't wait on other folks. We are going to talk about providing the appropriate resources. There are a couple of controversial issues that we have to have a conversation about. At the end of the day, there are a lot of citizens in the streets of the city of Philadelphia to talk about, when are we going to look at stop and frisk in a constitutionally enacted way? Those are conversations that people have to have. We're going to have to talk about the fact that people are carrying illegal weapons on a daily basis in the streets of the city of Philadelphia, and there's some conversation about whether or not you should prosecute a person for carrying an illegal weapon. You are carrying an illegal weapon. That is against the law. Those are the kind of conversations that we should be having in earnest, and that means of all of us, with the issue with respect to the police oversight committee, the policing plan by Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Scola, who has been dealing with these issues on a neighborhood basis on a consistent way. It's time to have that real conversation. So we're prepared to do that. Let my councilmember say a couple of words, and then we'll deal with some questions. Oh, Councilwoman Gilmore-Richardson, Councilwoman Parker?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. President, for giving us this opportunity. I do want to state for the record that I think the mayor's comments were asinine. I didn't tweet about it, post it. I picked up the telephone, and I called him, and I told him that if you can feel this way, imagine how Philadelphians who don't have the ability to check out feel on a daily basis. None of our stress is heavier than the people who are altering their lives on a daily basis. Every block, every community, every neighborhood, and they don't want us to simply say, "We throwing up our hands, we can't do anything." We don't have the luxury to do that. What Council President Clark just outlined for us today is a part of a comprehensive approach that we must employ to ensure that this sense of lawlessness that people feel are prevailing in our city, that we're doing everything that we possibly can to make our city safer and cleaner, providing access to economic opportunity for all. So I'm proud to stand here with my colleagues today to affirm our support for very tangible outcomes, things that we can do here in our city to make sure our people feel safer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. So I want to first say that my grandkids were at that event yesterday, when the shooting happened, when the stampede happened, and one of my grandkids in particular is a little bit reclusive, doesn't like to go out in crowds. We had to force her to actually go to her event. She broke out, started running in a direction, we had to run her down to find her and bring her back. That's number one. Number two, if there was a back door to the Alamo, there wouldn't have been a Texas. Ain't no back door to this. We have to stand and fight this. In fact, what my president is saying, we will double down. And we're not waiting for the cavalry, if you would, to come from Washington. We passed lost and stolen gun laws in 2019. We passed red flag laws earlier. We need to check and see how we're enforcing them in the city of Philadelphia, so we are here to double down. We're not here to give up. We're not here to allow the bad actors in Philadelphia to take over and win. One of the things, I was there last night at that press conference, one of the things that was said that wasn't really covered as much, is that when asked, "Will we do another Made in America?", the answer was yes, and we'll start the plan tomorrow to begin to do the same event, because if we acquiesce to this madness, then we will be retreating all of our lives as a city, and that's not going to happen. So what we're here to say is that we're full partners in this government. What we're here to say is that we didn't wait until last night to start planning and implementing laws, and that we are going to double down. We're going to look at what we can do to look at lost and stolen, red flag, and when we say red flag, the domestic partnership part of it as well, incorporating the sheriff's office, when there's a order, a stay-away order, do guns get confiscated from homes? When somebody comes into school and got beat up in the schoolyard because they couldn't play ball well enough, and somebody says, "I'm coming back to shoot up the place," we should believe them. And we should temporarily confiscate weapons so that they can prove competency before a judge and say, "Well, you know, I was just shooting off steam, I didn't mean it." Well, until you prove that to us, we're going to take matters in our own hand. We have court cases at the state level right now, being decided about lost and stolen guns. Like, this is low-hanging fruit. And it seems that in between Pittsburgh sometimes and Philadelphia, they don't get it, what we go through on a daily basis. But it's not just Philly. The town of Mayberry got shot up the other day in Illinois, and we face those same problems. Bullets don't discriminate. Bullets don't care about geography, and we're here, and we're here to tell you, we're doubling down.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, councilmember president, for your leadership. This is important. As you heard, we are not putting excuses out there or blaming others for what's happening. We, as council, are going to act. We need to do things to make sure public safety and gun violence is our number-one priority. It has been our number-one priority, and we need to continue to keep it our number-one priority. We're not blaming things in the federal government for passing laws, or the state government for not passing laws. We are knowing what we can do as a city of Philadelphia. Do we support stronger gun laws? Absolutely. But then, will we enforce those stronger gun laws, right? That's the important thing. If we're going to support stronger gun laws, then we have to enforce stronger gun laws. We have gun laws on the books already that we can enforce today, and we should be doing so. And not that, but when you see people out there, we had great events for a month here in Philadelphia. Wawa Welcome America was a success. We had one person go out there at the end of the event and tarnish that event. That cannot be tolerated. We, as a city of Philadelphia, need to find that person and then prosecute them to the full extent of the law. And I know sometimes when people hear that, they don't like it, and enforcement has to be part of this. We believe in diversionary programs. We believe in helping people second chances. We want to help people who have challenges in their lives, but we also need to make sure enforcement is part of this. Enforcement needs to play a key role, because if you don't take us up on our opportunities that we're providing for you, as you heard, $184 million this year in the budget to help with gun violence initiatives and other preventive measures. That's important. But if you don't take us up on them, we then need to have enforcement measures so that you can learn, maybe on your own, when you're in time, in your own room by yourself, what those consequences are for you to be able to out there and have a gun in your hand and using that gun to commit a crime. We together are standing as council to make sure, and we need to work with the administration, no matter who it is and where they are, and with the district attorney's office, the defendants' association, the courts, and everybody, need to stand together to make sure we are taking this as our number-one priority, taking it serious, and that our public knows that their safety is our number-one concern. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank our council president and leadership team for calling us together today to talk about the important work we are continuing to do in Philadelphia City Council to address the issues we are faced with in our city. Now is not the time to bury our heads in the sand. We are going to continue to do the work that we have been doing in council to invest in communities, to ensure that we can keep people safe in communities. As my colleagues stated, the Wawa Welcome America event was 16 full days of wonderful events across the city of Philadelphia. We had no issues. And it was last night where we had challenges on the Parkway, where someone shot two police officers, and my thoughts and prayers remain with them as they're on the road to recovery. But we cannot do nothing. We must do something to address the challenges we are faced with in the city of Philadelphia. And we know we have a challenge with gun violence and with individuals being shot all across the city. That is not okay, and we must do something to stop it. And as my colleague stated, he talked about enforcement. You know, from a council perspective, we legislate and we appropriate, so we are giving the tools necessary to the administrative departments to do what they need to do to get the job done. But we must have enforcement, and we must have partnership and collaboration across government, our criminal justice partners, and everyone else to ensure that we are enforcing the laws that are on the books. We cannot allow this to continue to occur in our city, and we're going to do all we can, from a city council perspective, to ensure we're investing in communities and doing what needs to be done to make Philadelphia safe.
Right. Thank you, councilmembers. So, bottom line is, we're going to do what we have to do, all right? It's just not right for people not to be able to enjoy themselves on the Fourth of July, the Fifth of July, the 12th of December, the October the 12th, whatever day, people should be able to live the life that they deserve. So we're going to do what we need to do, both in terms of the appropriation side, in terms of leadership, in terms of meeting with people to make sure that they feel comfortable, to make sure that we put the necessary resources on the table, to make sure the organizations, and more importantly, the people of the city of Philadelphia. But we're not going to fix this alone. Seventeen members of council and the mayor are not going to be able to fix that alone. The district attorney, right? The sheriff, whoever, right, needs to be a part of this process, but I think most importantly, that the citizens need to say, "Enough is enough," and they've been saying it, right? Enough is enough, but you got to participate in the solution. It's one thing to talk about the problem, it's another thing to be a part of the solution. So we're here today to reiterate our commitment. We are here to say, to do what we need to do to make people safe. I know, I'm sure you all have some questions. I want to thank you very much. And by the way, one thing I forgot, I don't want to mess up Channel 6. Technology, drone usage. So I've been actually doing this informal conversation with people about the use of drones, because I see these little things flying around. I think some of you all have drones for your usage. And I'm saying, do we use them in the city of Philadelphia? And yes, I found out that we actually do, but we need to enhance our drone technology, we need to enhance our video surveillance technology, because when you find, you talk to police officers and even the DA, they will tell you that to be able to have direct feed, visual feed from crimes that are committed enhances their chance of solving that crime two, three, fourfold. So that's something else that we have to have a serious conversation about. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
What kind of laws are on the books that you feel are not being enforced well enough?
Red flag.
I know councilmembers still have that as well. And also, when we talk about the idea of talking about stop and frisk, that seems to go directly against the driving equity act that was passed as well, which wanted to keep people from being unnecessarily pulled over. So when you're having a conversation about stop and frisk, if you get what I'm seeing in this recent act that was passed, and what are some of those laws already on the books that need to be better enforced?
Right. So first of all, we supported the driving equity, but I think that the specifics in terms of the implementation of the driving equity was not adequately explained to people. You have to have cause, right? There are certain aspects of you driving, certain quote-unquote violations, that will allow a police officer and law enforcement to stop somebody while driving. They can't stop somebody because they have something hanging out the window. They can't stop somebody because, just simply because the taillight is out. There has to be a violation of a particular law. The issue with respect to stop and frisk is an extremely controversial one, and I acknowledge that. But when I talk to people out in the streets of the city of Philadelphia, they want to know, "What did Ramsey and what did Nutter do when they had those numbers down below 300?" And the simple reality is that they used stop and frisk. They went too far, people abused it, and the courts had to step in and say, "We're shutting this down." But the question is, do you do it in a way for cause, right? Because it has to be for cause, because this is America. You can't just simply decide you're going to stop somebody. Look, I'm a six-foot-three black guy, right? I'll take this suit off, and I'm walking down Cecil B. Moore Avenue, I'm likely to be stopped, I'm likely to have a cop look at me two, three times, right? That's reality, right? But the simple reality is, is that that's a conversation that we're going to have to have, because you can't have an environment where everybody is carrying a gun, an illegal gun, right? And what they did in Washington last week, that's not going to fix that. So let's have the conversation, let's have real people involved in that conversation, and let's figure out what we're going to do.
So what do you envision, based on the risk policy, that you think would be fail and constitutional?
Well, that's up to everyone involved. I don't get to enforce the law, because I'm not a law enforcement officer. I don't even get to write the law as it relates to the enforcement of crime, but we will be in that conversation. And the simple reality is, is that the court has laid out the unconstitutional implementation of stop and frisk during those particular years. They have also indicated what is constitutional. You must have cause, right? You can't just simply decide that people are going to be stopped. I don't want that to happen, right? Because as I said, I will probably get stopped, just because, right? Let's just call it like it is, right? So when I have to talk to people on the street, they ask me, and you trust me, if there was a poll taken about stop and frisk, and stop and frisk was believed to be a tool towards fighting crime and stopping people from carrying illegal guns, I think you might be surprised at the outcome of that particular poll.
Council President, the number of people that said laws were on the books, to me, what law permed on the book was held last night? And honestly, and realistically, how much of what you need to do is that a law has allowed you to do with these people?
Councilman, you want?
Yeah, we don't, so the problem with last night, Manuel, is we don't know what the cause was. We don't know whether that was somebody shooting up in the air and celebrating Fourth of July, and the bullet came down. We don't know if the gun that was shot up in the air was stolen. We don't know if it was a ghost gun. We don't know. But in cases where we start to look at last night, the proliferation of that many guns on the street is part of the problem. When you start talking about stop and frisk and what is just cause, well, if somebody's riding erratically down my block, swerving, please stop them, please frisk them, please do what you're supposed to do within the constitution of the law. If somebody carjacked a car, and that car is stolen, please stop them, please frisk them, they jacked this person, and we're not safe, congresspeople get carjacked, so we want this problem solved in a way that is constitutional, but it is solved. We cannot just not do anything.
Hasburg?
Hasburg, two things you mentioned about what's on the books now. One of the things that's on the books is lost and stolen. That's in the matter of the court right now, deciding whether Philadelphia, the only city of a first-class in the Commonwealth, we passed that law, and they're deciding whether it is equitable for people who deer hunt in Potter County, for them to have to report their gun stolen. Well, in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, it's an important part of our daily quality of life. Another is the red flag laws, which are now something that the federal government is considering. We passed that law a long time ago, that said that if there are people that present themselves as a menace, say, "I'm going to shoot somebody on Monday," we should believe them, at least by Tuesday, and take their threats as meaningful. And if they're not, they were just angry, they were shooting off steam, give them back their guns. But if not, we may have prevented a loss of life, and we have to take some of these decisions into local hands and implement them to keep our citizens safe. We're not conceding this, the roads or the schools or any of that, we are doubling down on what we have, fighting with what we have.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I just want to, with respect to the laws on the books now.
I don't know about Hasburg, but with respect to what we want to do in Philadelphia.
All right, let me answer the way. It is illegal to carry a gun on the streets of the city of Philadelphia without a permit to carry. Now, Supreme Court ruled what they ruled about the New York law, but as we speak here right now, you need to have a license to carry in the state of Pennsylvania. You also should have a legal gun, right? Too frequently, and you talk to the police, they have confiscated thousands and thousands of guns, right? Where are the corresponding arrests, right? And give a person whatever, be it diversion, be it slap on the hand, or be it some real time, right? There's no correlation between those two, right? That's a problem, and you can't like have an environment where everybody has a gun. And I know, look, I grew up with 30th and 9th, right? I knew that, you know, did I ever have a gun on me? Absolutely, or I'm not going to sugarcoat it, right? But the simple reality is, if you got an illegal gun, there should be some consequences, right? You can't just like walk around with a gun on you, that's not legal, because the likelihood that if you get into some fight or some argument, you might actually use it, and we've seen that too frequently. So that's just a reality.
So who is not in the council at all?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, is that the charging individual and the charging unit actually ultimately ends up being the district attorney. And we've had that conversation, I've had that conversation with the district attorney, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, that there's some question as to whether or not the district attorney has been aggressive enough on taking people and prosecuting people that are carrying illegal weapons. I mean, I'm just, it is what it is, right? So, you know, if the district attorney has some other information, then we'd like to see it, but when you make a statement that says, "Just because you have an illegal gun doesn't mean you're going to commit a crime," well, you are committing a crime by having an illegal gun. That's just not consistent with the law.
What are you actually proposing needs to change with regard to stop and frisk? Because to my understanding, pedestrian stops don't happen, they just want the unprosecuted ones to stop. So what are you proposing actually to change here?
The only thing I'm proposing is for people to have that conversation. I mean, you know, ultimately, I will not be the entity, these members will not be the entity, we will participate in it, that will make that determination, because ultimately, it will be the courts that will determine whether or not it's legal. But you can't have a situation where people are afraid to have a conversation. And all I'm asking, if that's something that worked, quote-unquote, then maybe it needs to be looked at. And this is based on, as I said, not me waking up in the morning or us deciding, "Oh, well, let's try that." No, this is from person after person that asked us, "How did those numbers go below 300 at the time when the Nutter/Ramsey administration was in place?" Let's have the conversation.
Council President, we heard what your colleagues, your leadership colleagues, talk on mayor's comments last night, as you know, also minister. What do you think the impact of mayor's comments are to last night?
I don't know. I mean, the mayor made his comments, I'm assuming, and I know, all right, I know the mayor, and I know he was extremely frustrated. I understand that the mayor today was supposed to make some comments with respect to what he said, and there's going to be a release issue, so I'll let that speak to itself. We wanted to make sure that we talk about city council of Philadelphia, because we are integral part of the government, right? Not only the legislative part, but more importantly, the appropriation side. And we just, if there's like any question about whether or not we're committed, any question or not, we're going to stick to our mission, our requirement, based on the charter and the constitution, there should be no question after today.
So anybody that thinks the mayor should resign, what's the impact?
All right, you got to talk to those, talk to those members. I mean, I can speak to Darrell Clark, and, you know, I can speak to what our task is before us. You know, people, this is America, people are entitled to their opinion. Right now, we need to deal with this, right? And we need, and what we've been doing is not working at the level that it needs to work, so.
Mr. President, can I just add something for 30 seconds here, please? When you were asking the question about the use of stop and frisk, we are talking about the constitutional use of stop and frisk, and using it as a tool. In addition to that, when you say stop and frisk, it's almost as if people are saying to you that if you support criminal justice reform, if you support equity, then you can't support employing the constitutional use of stop and frisk, then you can't support community policing. It is not an either-or, it is not a box. We're talking about every tool that we have in the toolbox, we have to employ the use of it in order to make the city safer. And, Mr. President, it really always is very interesting to me that it's people, almost as if they're going to make us choose where we're going to go and what we're going to do. It's not either-or, it's and. We have to use all of the tools.
And you know what? It needs a different name, right? Because sometimes you need to change the name, because the reality is, is that when you reference stop and frisk, it has a negative connotation. And the bottom line is, it should be a part of the policing strategy that's employed, but first and foremost, that's why when we have this, we want the Police Oversight Commission, independent police oversight commission, to be an integral part of formulating a policy around that, similar to what we will hopefully implement as it relates to enhanced drone usage.
As the leader of city council, the mayor said what you said, why shouldn't he resign?
I mean, you got to ask the mayor that. I mean, I'm just telling you about, as the president of city council, nobody does...
Shouldn't he resign?
The mayor should make a decision as to what he wants to do. I talked to the mayor today, the mayor said he's not going anywhere.
How do you support that?
I mean, it's not, I didn't elect the mayor by myself, I voted for the mayor, but the mayor has to make that decision as to whether or not he should resign. I'm not calling for the mayor's resignation, because I don't think that's productive at this point. What we need to do is do what we're supposed to do as the city council of Philadelphia. The mayor is going to make, continue, I'm assuming, continuing to make statements that he's going to make.
Does anybody else work off the agenda to resign?
I want to say something here. As elected officials and leaders of the city, we need to work with the other elected officials who are elected by the people. If they decide to resign, that's on their own, but we need to work with the people who are in the offices, whether it's the district attorney's office, and we don't have to agree with the mayor or the district attorney or anybody else, but we need to work with them. We can't do this by ourselves, they can't do it by themselves, right? They're all different branches of government. And if we have to sit there and make those hard, have those meetings together with the mayor's office, with the administration, with the district attorney's office, with the courts and the judges, we need to do that. That's what's going to solve this problem. We're going to tell people to resign, and what's going to happen, all right? There's chaos for, we can still not do anything, everybody's going in five different directions. That doesn't help us. We now, as leaders of council, are working together with the administration, will continue to work with whoever's in the offices that are...
to work with whoever's in the offices that are there to try to resolve this problem, which is public safety. And I think that's the most important part. And we could then times Harrisburg trying to impeach somebody and then going through that circus and all that, that doesn't fix anything for us, right? So we are leaders, and we're going to stand together, and we're going to work together with whoever's there to make this a priority for us. And I think we need to continue to do that and bring everybody to the table, and we will do that from council's perspective, and we'll do that from the administration. And everybody will be at that meeting, including the police commissioner, including the courts, and including the district attorney's office.
So I'm dating myself. John F. Kennedy had one of the most secure locations that you can imagine, right? The state of Texas. But guess what? Somebody made a decision from far away that I'm going to shoot him, and that's what they did. If somebody has it in their mind, and they can either have an illegal weapon or a legal weapon, they're going to shoot somebody. Guess what? There's not a lot you can do. But the bottom line is, the more you ensure that people that should not have guns don't have guns, you're going to minimize that opportunity. That's why we need to push hard on making sure that people don't have weapons, right? We don't know how that happened and what it happened. Like you said, Councilman Jones said, it could have been somebody shooting in the air. We don't know. But the bottom line is, you got to, you can't just have everybody in the city of Philadelphia walking around with guns, most of them illegal, you know? That's a problem. We need to focus on that in every meaningful way in my estimation. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance.
We had one meeting together. We had one meeting with the council president, myself, the district attorney, the mayor, the police commissioner, the defenders associations, and we, city solicitor. We, we did meet, and we had very real conversations and very real disagreements, and that's good. And we're meeting again, and we're following up again, because we know that this is a priority for everybody. And we know that if we don't do it together, we're not going to do it. So again, we're not going to agree on everything, but what we have to find is what our common interest is, how do we protect the people of the city of Philadelphia, and then stand together, when we're done having those meetings, stand together on what we're going to do to move forward. And I think that is the key. And again, we're, we're going to disagree on things. And what we got to find is that common place where we know that public safety issue and gun violence is going to be something that is addressed, and we all stand there together and make that announcement. Well, our, and we're, we are scheduling a follow-up meeting. It is scheduled for the end of this week. So it most likely will be virtual, because everybody's in different locations. But that'll be our second meeting, and hopefully we'll have another one after that. The, how we deal with Made in America, and I, I have strong faith in, in our, our police department and our intel, and, and council president could talk to you, and then Councilmember Jones and others could tell you that, you know, there'll be a plan devised to make sure that we're as safe as possible. And listen, we, we are a great city with great events. We had a bunch of events all throughout the city of Philadelphia with no issue. We have some person who wants to go commit that crime or shoot somewhere, or was it targeted or not? We don't know. But that one person is not going to stop the city of Philadelphia from having great events and having people enjoy themselves safely. And I think we need to promote that, and we need to push that, and we need to secure it, and make sure we're doing everything possible to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.